We are all good to go. Good evening, everyone. I am calling the January 7th City Council meeting to order. This meeting is being held one day later than normal due to the sea holiday. Buru Gaubun Sing Janti, and I'm sure I said that wrong. It occurred on January 6th, and in accordance with our cultural and calendar, we try to avoid those holidays that can have impacts on residents' abilities to participate. As a reminder, we continue to have a remote aspect to our meetings. Both staff and members of the public may be participating in tonight's meeting remotely via WebEx. We do have Councilmember Martz hovering over the room above us. He is joining us digitally tonight. Thank you, Councilmember Martz. The first item on the agenda this evening is the Pledge of Allegiance, and I welcome all to join. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. First item of business is a fun one. It is, this first meeting of the year has several sort of housekeeping and celebratory aspects to it and a little bit of work, but mostly celebration. The item is ID 1780 under special business. And this is our chance as a council to recognize Councilmember Hunt, who will be leaving us this week because she is moving up to the State House of Representatives. The legislative session is going to start next week. And so Councilmember Hunt's final council member, council member meeting is this evening, and final committee meeting is tomorrow. She will be serving as Issaquah's 5th District Representative, one of two in the state legislature for the next few years. It's kind of easy for me as mayor to talk off the cuff about the accomplishments that this amazing woman has made on our council. Victoria has been here seven years. And from the get-go, she brought some things to the table that just made us have fuller and richer conversations. She is an environmentalist at heart, and Issaquah is the perfect place for an environmentalist to move to. We have so many community values that are tied into this wonderful landscape and geography that we have here. And so it's, it's a great addition to have someone who comes with that background knowledge. Education in ecology, a data scientist approach to how you make decisions. What problem are we trying to solve? What do we need to know? How are we going to examine the data? And how will we know if we're going to get the outcome we want and continue on with a program? Or do we need to change it? She has brought that skill set to this dais for seven years, and it has made conversations and decision-making richer. I appreciate her for that, and I am sure that the legislature has no idea what is coming at them. So it has been a pleasure to work with her, and we know that her knowledge of local government and the values that are important to the community in Issaquah will be reflected in her work at the state level. So we are so happy that she is moving up to the state, but we will miss her sorely. She has left her mark on this community with her work on our electrical vehicle charging ordinance, her work helping me in particular as the mayor to move one of the biggest pieces of legislation I ever worked on, which was a complete rewrite of the land use code. We were under an enormous time crunch knowing that a 10-year update of our comprehensive plan was coming, and this thing needed to move. And so many conversations were had. She was a real ally to my administration team in making sure that we had the right conversations. We were talking about the right things, and we were going to get this done on time so that we could then turn our focus on to our long-term planning. So I am so proud to have had this time to serve with her. I am excited about working with her in the legislature, but sorry to see her go. And I know that there are many council members and council leadership here that probably would also like to say a few words. Council President?
Thank you. Well, I don't want to repeat what the mayor has said because all of those are true. I will add two other things that I know Councilmember Hunt has worked on that have been really effective and important to our community, which was the Bergsma land acquisition, which I know was something that was truly important to you and something that, you know, it was a community value and something that we will be able to see for generations to come. And then the other thing at almost the entirely other end of the spectrum is, is the dock lighting program. And the fact that you have worked regionally to understand how important this is and to be able to work with other councils in all of the work that you do just to recognize how important that area is to our community, to the environment, to our little red fish. And all of those things just really recognizes the importance of close consideration of what's important to our community, what you can do, and how effective policy can be in making a difference in that. We will truly, truly miss you. We are losing a really effective thinker and worker on council. And we're only okay with it because the State of Representatives is getting you. So thank you for all your contributions.
And I do have one closing statement, but I'm going to look for microphones. Go ahead, Councilmember Hall.
Yes, please. Thank you. Over the winter holidays, I wrote out some things that I wanted to say, so bear with me. Just to start, I want to say that Victoria has earned many titles during her time on the council. Councilmember, council president, committee chair, climate champion, Title 18 trailblazer, as was mentioned, super salmon supporter, data defender, open space operator, and green necklace guardian, just to name a few. She's also been a mentor to me ever since I joined the council back in 2020. She's recommended books for me to read and encouraged my curiosity in policy issues. She's set an example for how prepared she was each and every single meeting. She's treated disagreement as opportunity for dialogue, and she's been genuinely interested in our perspectives here on the council. Simply put, she's made us a better council, and she has made our community a brighter place to live. And I've definitely been in complete denial that she's leaving us up until now. But you're not really, are you? She has this incredible opportunity to do good on a bigger stage, and I'm so excited to see what she can do for our community and for so many communities across the state. I similarly just hope the legislature is ready for another policy honk because I imagine you're going to be unstoppable there, just diving into everything. And I suppose the only things left to say are just how grateful we are for your service, how grateful we are to have been able to serve next to you over these years. And thank you, Victoria, and good luck.
Okay, top that somebody. Or we can close with that if I don't see any other hands because I know it's very mutual admiration and appreciation for all of Councilmember Hunt. Go ahead, and then I would like to present you with something after.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I also, I so appreciate all of your kind words. I wanted to take a moment as well to thank this community and to thank our staff and to thank the mayor and my fellow council members for this opportunity and for this deep honor of serving our community these last seven years. I've always measured my public service by the age of my son because when he started, he was an infant. He had just been born, and he is now seven. And my daughter was three. And so I've, I've had the experience of raising my family in this amazing community and serving my community at the same time, and I'm forever grateful for that. The work of a council is never finished. And I was thinking about the last time I, I really thought about all of the things that we work on and reflecting back on my first comments when I was running for the appointment seven years ago. My reasons for running included to protect our beautiful natural environment in a growing city, in a welcoming city, make sure that we are continuing to grow in a sustainable way. We are so blessed to have our beautiful forests, lakes of mammoth, our salmon-bearing streams, and the work of protecting those while continuing to be a welcoming community continues. It's in good hands with all of you. And I've been so blessed to be a part of that as we have, as we have changed a lot over these last seven years. Reflecting back, Harvey Manning Park. And, and many of you commented on some of these things that have happened over the seven years. But as a council member and as an elected official, nothing can be done on one's own. So these were all accomplishments of, of all of us and of the community working together to accomplish these things. Harvey Manning Park, Bergsma acquisition, putting that land in the hands of the community after so much community advocacy was, was truly a great opportunity for me at the beginning of my time on council and one that I am so grateful to have been able to work with everybody on. It was a very collaborative effort as well and something we all, we did have difference of opinion on that item, on that policy. It was a, it was an important discussion, and we all respected each other in that process. And that was, that was and continues to be very important to me, and I'm very grateful for that. The way that those conversations unfolded, and I think it set us up for success over the next years as well. Very grateful to be part of our Climate Action Plan, our establishment of an environmental board, which sets us up in an institutional way to continue to make progress on these issues. Our Equity Board, which continues to invite voices to the table. This is something that we have made a lot of progress on and continues to be something to work on. As I said at the beginning, the, the work of public service is never done. But at the same time, I think that, that the work of establishing that board and encouraging those voices and continuing to bring people to the table is, is so important and something that we continue to, to work on as a city. Title 18, the land use code, which will set us up for decades in the future to continue to be a welcoming city while also protecting our natural environment and, and also concentrating our growth in the area where we expect there to be future light rail. And then also reflecting on the strategic plan, which was adopted during my time on council. We then worked through COVID and the recovery after COVID, especially with our business community, and using those lessons learned in the revised strategic plan, which I was also able to be a part of.
I worry you're scaring the future councilmembers off with your long list of hard projects.
I'm almost, I'm almost finished. You know, I just, I, I did want to reflect back on all of these things because, because we are never finished. I think it is important to take a pause and, and really reflect on, on the changes and, and on the work that has been done. And, you know, there's continued work in emergency preparedness and community outreach and bringing the community in, in making sure that we are growing sustainably. And then also continuing in our, our much more data-centered, data-based way as we have been, as we have been over these last years. I look forward to continuing with all of those things. And the data also helps us be more accountable to our community, which is so important. And so in closing, I wanted to say again, I am so grateful to our staff, our community, for this opportunity to serve our mayor and our council for making this such a positive collaborative experience and such a, such a memorable part of my life.
Well, if you would do us an honor, we'd like to create a picture for your new office. And we don't want to lose Tola, so I think if I could get you all to come down, I'd love to present her with this plaque and have Wally take a picture with Tola looking on from us. For those that may not be familiar with the structure of our representation, Victoria is one of three reps for the 5th District. We have two representatives and a senator. And so it's just really important to have that close connection with somebody who's making state policy decisions. So thank you all. Thank you, council, for your participation and gifts. I think that's a wonderful idea. So we're going to move into the next kind of new year business, which is the election of council president and deputy council president for 2025. The Issaquah Municipal Code provides that a council president and deputy council president be elected at the first meeting in January for a one-year term. A summary of their responsibilities was provided in the agenda bill for tonight. The following process will be used to elect the officers. First, I will call for nominations. When all nominations have been made, I will close the nominations. Council members will be then provided an opportunity to discuss nominees. I will then ask council members to cast votes on the nominees in the order that they were nominated by a roll call vote. Council members may vote for themselves and may vote for only one nominee. The council member receiving the majority of the votes is declared council president. I will repeat this process for deputy council president. So we'll begin with nominations for council president. Are there any nominations?
Sure, thank you. I'd like to nominate Councilmember Lindsey Walsh for council president.
Thank you. Councilmember Walsh has been nominated. Are there any other nominations? Not seeing an indication. So there, is there any discussion? And if not, we'll go to the vote, but you are free to make some comments if you'd like. You made the motion if you'd like to add some comments.
Sure, just really briefly to say, I think she's done an excellent job serving us as council president. Over the years, I had the opportunity to be your deputy council president for two years and worked very closely with you. And I think you do a good job representing our interests, but also keeping us moving and facilitating our meetings. So I'm thrilled to nominate you for another term.
Thank you, Councilmember Hall. Any other comments? Let's move ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I concur with Councilmember Hall. I also have observed, so on our council, the council president will often respond on behalf of the council when emails come in, especially if there are questions or points of information. And Councilmember Walsh has continuously done an excellent job responding on behalf of the council and providing factual information back to our community that helps our community understand the work that we do.
Thank you, Councilmember Hunt. Are there any other comments? Okay. Seeing done, I will call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye and raising your hand.
Okay. And Mayor, I believe the on-air light was flashing because your microphone wasn't on. So that might be why.
I will repeat the instructions. The vote was seven to no, a unanimous vote. And Councilmember Walsh will be serving as council president for 2025. And we'll move to nominations for deputy council president. Councilmember Martz?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I nominate Councilmember Barb D. Michelle for deputy council president.
Thank you. Are there any other nominations? Not seeing any other nominations. Councilmember Martz, would you like to talk to your nomination?
I would, very briefly. I'll just say that Councilmember D. Michelle has long connection and experience in our community and has brought that deep leadership style to the role of the deputy council president. I'm confident that she'll continue to provide effective and transformative leadership to the council if she continues in this role. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Martz. Any other comments, council president?
Thank you. Just want to appreciate having served with Councilmember D. Michelle over the last year and appreciate all of her help. As Councilmember Hunt said, nothing happens as an individual, and that's the same for leadership. And so recognizing all of the contributions and the ability to, you know, throw ideas back and forth and implement all of the adjustments and changes has been really important. So I appreciate that assistance.
Thank you. Any other discussion of the nominee? Not seeing any indication. All those in favor signify by saying aye and raising your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. That passes unanimously. Congratulations. Councilmember D. Michelle will be serving as our council deputy, our deputy council president for 2025. We're going to move into the audience. Some, there's some nice little golf claps there. We're going to move into the next item on the agenda, which is audience comments. And we do have some members of the audience here tonight. I'm not sure if anyone is willing to speak, but we do appreciate that you came to join us. Members of the public may address council at this time in person or virtually. Those who signed up in advance to make comments will be called on first. And if you're joining us virtually and would like to make comments, please raise your virtual hand or send the host a chat message. If you're on the phone, press star three. If you have joined by computer or smartphone, look for a hand icon. And if you're in the room and didn't sign up, I will ask for other speakers before we close this portion of the meeting. City Clerk, has anyone signed up for audience comments this evening?
Yes.
Thank you. So if you are making comments, you are invited to address the council regarding matters that are directly related to Issaquah's programs, projects, services, or events. Comments related to political campaigns are not permitted. Please direct your comments to the whole council and not individuals. While this is not a question-and-answer session, we will contact you to follow up if needed. When you are recognized, please unmute your microphone. If you're a virtual attendee, step up to the lectern in the center of the room if you are here with us and state your name, address, and relationship to the city. Please speak clearly and pause frequently and limit your comments to five minutes. If you are attending virtually, do not respond after your name or phone number is called or if your connection is lost unexpectedly. The meeting will still need to proceed, and you are encouraged to rejoin the meeting if able. Personal attacks, obscene language, derogatory remarks, and disruptive behavior will not be permitted. And public comments, written and verbal, are a very important aspect of the public process. The city takes these comments seriously, and we thank all of those that are taking the time to address us this evening. City Clerk, could you please identify the first person who signed up to speak?
Yes, we have two individuals who are virtual who've signed up in advance to speak. The first is Matt Coyne. Matt, I'm making you a panelist now, so you should now see the option to unmute and can choose to turn your video on.
Can you see and hear me?
See and hear you.
Okay, great. Well, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council. Hello and Happy New Year. Matt Coyne, Issaquah School Board Director. And before I jump in, also want to congratulate Victoria. Excited for her next step. I'm here this evening to provide you with an update on Issaquah School District's bond measure. As we all know, the measure that ran during the November general election did not meet the 60% requirement for passage. The measure did reach 50% approval, but unfortunately, Washington is one of a small number of states across the country that requires 60% approval on school bond measures. Interestingly enough, for most other states, it's, it's a simple majority. Even though the November bond measure did not pass, the needs related to the bond still exist in the Issaquah School District. The school board completed a series of listening sessions since the November bond measure and heard very clearly that the original bond measure was too large in size and scope. We took that feedback to heart, and in our December school board meeting, approved a bond measure totaling $231.6 million, which is 63% reduction from the November measure. The new measure will appear on the February 11th special election ballot. The new bond measure maintains the current combined tax rate of $3.09 per 1,000 assessed value, representing a decrease from the 2024 rate of $3.13. And for context, it's, this is significantly lower than the previous 20-year average of $3.90. The district has structured the bond to replace expiring bonds and levies, ensuring no tax rate increase for property owners, which is a key component of the February measure. The updated measure focuses on two key areas of focus, which is really what we heard from the community, really making sure that we were clear in what we were looking to raise funds for through the bond. The two areas of focus are safety and security and high school capacity. Safety and security projects would total approximately $39.9 million. This includes updates to fire systems and the construction of vestibules at all of our three comprehensive high schools. It would also include updating security cameras, intercoms, gates, and fencing. The second component and the largest piece of, of the February measure will be high school capacity, which will total $191.7 million. This would allow the district to begin construction on the new comprehensive high school, which, as we like to say, is now shovel-ready. We have the property and the permits. We just need the additional dollars to start the project. This would also include the expansion and remodel of Liberty High School to support career programming. As part of our listening sessions, we also heard a desire from the community to have more project oversight on bond dollars and how they're, how they're spent and how we're, we're really working to allocate those funds. And so as part of this process, we're creating, the district is creating a capital projects oversight committee to ensure accountability and transparency. The committee will consist of a broad range of diverse participants, including community members, parents, guardians, staff, financial experts in construction and project management experts. So we're excited to see that come to fruition. We appreciated the council's support of our November measure and would ask that you consider passing a resolution in support of our February measure. So thank you again for your support.
Thank you, Matt.
Thank you.
City Clerk, who's next on our list?
Next, we have Wright Noel. Wright, I'll make you a panelist now. You should momentarily see an option to unmute and can choose to turn your video on.
Hello.
Hi, Wright. We can see and hear you.
Awesome. It's good to be before you again. Thank you, Mayor, and it's a privilege to be before the city council again. I think I've been here with different hats on, been here representing the chamber. Today, I'm representing Volunteers for Issaquah Schools. And I'm seconding Matt's request that you endorse the bond. We don't have a lot of time. The, it's on the February 13th ballot. We're actively, for those of you that don't know, Volunteers for Issaquah Schools is the nonprofit that campaigns for the passage of the bond since the school district cannot do that. And I will be emailing you, all of you, a link to the facts that Mr. Coyne shared with you and some further details so that you can have information to discuss if you feel you need to. So thank you for letting me talk, and we'd appreciate you looking at the issue and endorsing the bond, both personally and as, as a city.
Thank you, Wright. City Clerk, is there anyone else signed up to speak online?
No.
Thanks. I'm just going to check back in the room. We do have three with folks with us this evening. Anybody wish to speak during audience comments? I'm seeing negative, not wanting to. So thanks to both of our speakers this evening, speaking about the Issaquah School District bond proposal set for the February election and requesting that the council consider endorsing both personally and as a council body. Thank you for coming in. Much appreciated. As a reminder, anyone who would like to contact the city council can provide their written comments to thecitycouncil@issquahwa.gov email address. We're going to move on to an actual item of business. So you do have a little bit of work to do tonight. The consent calendar. I don't have any comments on any of the items on tonight's consent calendar, but I do want to give committee chairs an opportunity. Is there something on the consent calendar that needs to be addressed? And I see Councilmember Joe has his hand up.
Thank you. I would just like to briefly address the LTAC appointments. They are normal in the sense that we're just reappointing the four members that are on the committee. However, during the interviews, we did see a need to have the opportunity to have alternate members. And so we worked with the Clerks Department. Thank you so much for drafting the, the rules for that. And there will be an alternate appointed. As you see on the bottom, Rachel Wright from the Issaquah Arts, representing Issaquah Arts, will be one of the alternates. The other alternate spot is open, and we are reserving that for members, businesses that would collect the tax. And so if there is another hotel out there that would like to be an alternate member, please consider applying or reaching out to the Economic Development Department. Rachel Wright will be, of course, representing the people that would receive business money, money from the LTAC fund. So that's just a little change that I want to just point out to council members. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Joe. Are there any other committee chairs that need to? Are there any other committee chairs that need to make any comments? And I'm looking at Councilmember Mertz and not saying a nod. The consent calendar was distributed to council in advance, and if authorized, the items on the consent calendar will be considered together and approved by one motion. Have the payables and payroll been reviewed?
They have.
They have.
Thank you. Does any council member desire to remove any item from the consent calendar and consider it under regular business this evening? Not seeing any indication. Could I have a motion? Council President?
Yeah, I move we approve the consent calendar as distributed.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. That passes unanimously. As I stated earlier, we do not have any items under our regular business portion. Do have committee and regional reports, so we'll go around the table and start with Councilmember Joe.
Thank you. I'll touch on the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee. Again, applications for funding are now open. Interested parties that would like to receive some of the lodging tax money for this next year are advised to go ahead and reach out to Jen Davis Hayes in our Economic Development Department. The next meeting for the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee will be in late February, early March, depending on the chair's schedule. As you know, the chair needs to be reappointed for this next year, and it might continue to be me, it might be another council member, so the schedule will be a little flexible. And that, at that meeting, you will be reviewing the applications and deciding on funding allocations for the tax. Cascade Water Alliance, members are directed to look at the email from the mayor talking about most recent updates on water. And then the Cascade Board will be meeting on Wednesday, the 22nd, and the Public Affairs Committee will be meeting tomorrow at 9:00 a.m. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hall.
Thank you. Couple quick reports. First, Eastside Fire and Rescue, our next board meeting is this Thursday, January 9th. On our agenda, we're going to be adopting the 2025 legislative agenda, which is mostly unchanged from last year, although I understand the mayor has provided some helpful feedback on some of the finance stuff from SEA.
Trying to align the language on safety funding at the state level, and so making sure our fire agency or city is saying the same thing.
Perfect. Definitely appreciate that, so we'll be looking at that. Accepting a PFOS grant, updating board policy to finalize the Duval contract, which is finally coming to a close, and discussing our 2025 work plan, which, I'll just go over some of the things. These were kind of future conversations that we identified last year as part of budget and just kind of end a year as things we want to talk about in '25 and '26. They were updating how we evaluate the fire chief's performance, our fire permit fees, long-term funding strategies, reserve and fund balance policies, fee-for-transport policies, future plans for headquarters, long-term strategies for station siting around our service area, how to be more strategic and how we grow, and then also really fully understanding the full impacts of regionalization and what it means on both our workforce and the agency more generally. So lots of policy to prioritize and discuss this year and next year. Oh, and then also, I was recently appointed to the Emergency Management Advisory Committee or Council, one of the two, with King County. So our first meeting is tomorrow, tomorrow morning, January 8th. So I'm excited about that. We have a light agenda. We're doing onboarding, electing a new chair and vice chair for the SEA Caucus, and then we're getting some updates from King County and some other work groups amongst the council. I have already met with Jared, our emergency manager at the city, so we're going to continue to be talking throughout the year about what's coming up at the committee. He is also involved in some of the work groups that happen there as well. So anyways, looking forward to reporting all things emergency management back to you, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Hunt, your final report? I get one night to have fun with it.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. January 8th, tomorrow, Thursday at 6:30, will be the meeting of the Planning, Development, and Environment Committee. We have one item on the agenda, which is a continuation of our discussion on the Title 18, which is our land use code, middle housing regulations. It is COM 0086. And we are going to be discussing a number of items regarding middle housing, including how we implement the state's requirement of the two-dwelling units on a lot, and then consider other changes, including four units on lots, as well as changes to the size maximum of ADUs. And then also considering if there are other things that we would like our Volunteer Commission, the Planning Policy Commission, to consider in addition to what has been provided by our staff. So this will be my last meeting, chairing the Planning, Development, and Environment Committee. And if council members have any comments on this, please do let me know so that we can be sure to include those elements in this discussion on middle housing, which we have had several meetings on and continue to work through how we can best address the community's housing need.
Thank you. Councilmember Wright?
Thank you, Mayor Pauli. The Mobility and Infrastructure Committee is scheduled to meet on next Tuesday, January 14th at 6:30. There are two items on the draft agenda. One is the Mobility Implementation Plan, and the other is Quack Mountain Non-Motorized Improvement Project. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Deputy Council President?
You want to pick Councilmember Mertz first?
Oh, I missed, I missed the guy on the video. Councilmember Mertz.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. Sound Cities Association Public Issues Committee will be meeting this Wednesday, January 8th, from 7 till 9 p.m. On the agenda includes an update on executive director recruitment by our SEA president, Mary Lou Pauli, who some of you may know. And we'll also be taking action on the SEA legislative agenda, the 2025 PIC schedule, and conducting a PIC orientation and new member welcome, although, of course, because this was not a municipal election year, don't expect big changes, but there's always some changes and some fresh faces, so that's fun. Services, Safety, and Parks Committee doesn't meet till the end of the month, so I don't have anything to report on that. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Mertz. Deputy Council President?
Thank you so much. I don't have a report because most of the meetings that I attend were canceled in December, but I've got a bunch of meetings coming up. Eastside Human Services Forum will be meeting this Thursday at 11 o'clock on Zoom. Eastside Transportation Partnership will meet this Friday. This will be my last time chairing that group, and we'll have elections will be the first item on the agenda. So it's been a great year chairing that, I don't know, you don't call it an organization exactly, but a meeting of the minds on the east side around transportation. Then next week, Regional Transit Committee will be on Wednesday. And then on Thursday, and I'm happy to announce I've been appointed to the King County Board of Health. And so that first meeting will be on Thursday, January 16th at 1:30 in the afternoon, and getting really nice support from Sound Cities Association staff.
Council, Deputy Council President asked me about city's support for that, and I got the same answer from Sound Cities, is that they're very excited that you're joining and that they tend to do the city staff report for folks, so you'll enjoy working with them.
Yeah, for sure. It will be great.
Thank you. Council President?
Thank you. I've been reappointed to my two regional committees, the Sound Cities Association Growth Management Policy Board, which meets next Thursday on the 16th at 10:00 a.m., and the agenda's not been released, and then also the King County Affordable Housing, which isn't meeting in January, so we'll worry about that one in February. That concludes my report.
Thank you. So now moving on to the mayor's report, I will be talking about a couple of different things. Fun one, Puget Sound Regional Council has awarded the city of Isicuas with some funding for transportation projects. And for those of you that know the ins and outs of our transportation projects, we need grants in order to get our projects done. I'm excited to share that Isicuas will receive federal funding to complete two important transportation projects that will help improve mobility through our community. The first project includes improvements to Newport Way Northwest. The grant will provide right-of-way acquisition funds for improvements along Newport Way between Maple and Sunset in 2028. Once complete, this project will include a second southbound lane from Maple to south of Holly, protected bike lanes, sidewalks, and roundabouts at Newport and Juniper, Holly, and Dogwood. The second project will focus on improvements to Northwest Juniper Street. This grant will fund construction of a multi-use path on the north side of Northwest Juniper from Newport Way to Seventh Avenue Northwest. This will connect the existing Maple-Juniper multi-use trail and the proposed improvements along Newport Way between Maple and Sunset. A really big shout-out to our city staff and our Public Works Transportation team for securing these grants to improve our community. They're extremely competitive, and we can't get the work done without these grants. Councilmember Joe already mentioned that Cascade Water Alliance is making a big move. Cascade Water Alliance was formed some 20-plus years ago in order to help cities and water districts gain access to affordable water supply. The contract has been with Seattle Public Utilities, but it is moving to Tacoma Public Utilities. For the last three years, Cascade Water Alliance has been in negotiations with both Seattle Public Utilities and Tacoma Public Utilities in an effort to find the best value contract for purchasing water for its member cities and water districts. After the three-year process, Cascade is prepared to enter into a contract with Tacoma Public Utilities. On average, Tacoma Public Utilities offer has lower rates than Seattle's, but comes with the additional cost of constructing a transmission main from Tacoma's water supply to Cascade's transmission mains. Construction of this pipeline will need to occur in the 2030s and is anticipated to cost approximately $700 million, three times plus our entire annual budget. This is a really big project. Under the proposed contract, Cascade forecasts the need to hire eight additional full-time employees to plan, build, and maintain the new infrastructure. Under Cascade's current contract with Seattle Public Utilities, water demand is forecasted to exceed supply by the year 2044, necessitating the construction of a water transmission pipeline and development of the Lake Taps Water Treatment Plant, supplement water supply from external sources. Utilizing water from Tacoma Public Utilities instead of Seattle Public Utilities requires a portion of this transmission main to be constructed earlier than was originally planned, but delays construction of the water treatment plant by 20 years. The proposed TPU contract has two parts, including a wholesale agreement, which starts immediately, providing 15 MGD, and a temporary market price contract, which would go into effect between 2041 and 2062. Yes, we do planning out to 2060, which sounds crazy, but this is what you need to do for water supply. And 2062, be providing an additional 12 million gallons per day of additional water. Based on the current demand projections, supply from these contracts, as well as the declining supply from Seattle Public Utilities, will allow Cascade to delay construction of Lake Taps Treatment Plant until the 2060s at the earliest. This is the best work that we can do for our repairs. Cascade will remain under contract with SPU, but will receive significantly less water from Seattle over time and more from Tacoma in the future. TPU water is currently fluoridated and meets all current water quality standards matching the quality of the water currently provided by Seattle Public Utilities. That is a brief of about 100 pages and slides of information, and there is a slightly longer version in your email today. But as stated by Councilmember Joe, there will be some upcoming action required at the board meeting, and if you have questions, Councilmember Joe and I would be more than willing to get you the answers for those questions. And that concludes the mayor's report. We're going to move to Good of the Order and see if we have anyone with some items for tonight before I do meeting dates. Councilmember Joe?
Thank you. Many of you know about the city involvement with The Garage, the teen cafe over by the rec center. Tomorrow night, they'll be holding one of their monthly youth meetings where they share some of their experiences and challenges in our community. And this next one will be on creative outlets that the high school students seek and find and find helpful. That's from 6:00 to 7:30 tomorrow night, if you'd like to attend, at The Garage. Next month, more interestingly, is the teens and the environment is the subject. And last year, this was a fascinating panel, and I think that it's always interesting to hear how our youth are perceiving what we as adults, quote-unquote, are doing to the world and how the legacy that we're producing right now is going to impact their lives in the future. If you can attend, that's on February 12th at 6:00, and I think it would be well worth your time to come by. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Joe. Councilmember Mertz?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I was interested and impressed with the speakers we had this evening in regards to the bond that's going to be in front of the voters in February. And so partially because it's a new bond and partially because I didn't actually get to participate the last time we considered the last bond, I would like to request that the administration consider putting together a bill for consideration for the full council on January 21st at our next full meeting and that we consider that bill that, and, sorry, that the bill would be for endorsing the bond, so that we consider endorsing the bond on the 21st.
Thank you, Councilmember Mertz. City Clerk, is that a question for the council or a question for the administration? Do we need head nods from council?
Mayor, it could be posed as a, as a motion, be seconded and voted on.
Do you want to move that, Councilmember Mertz?
I would.
But you don't have to repeat it. It's a move to add the item, and I think our city clerk has all of that. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, a couple of seconds. Any comments or discussion? This action was also considered last fall. Otherwise, I think Councilmember Mertz did a good job explaining what his intent is. I'll ask, all in favor of adding this item to next, the date stated by the council member, say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, so thank you for that, Councilmember Mertz. Are there any other Good of the Order items? Council President?
Thank you. Just want to start out by thanking everyone for your vote of confidence on council leadership. I haven't, because obviously, we didn't know who was going to be voted into this position, but I haven't worked with the clerk. But as per usual, I imagine we will be reaching out to elicit your preferences for committee and other regional appointments, so look for that. This is going to be a little bit interesting this year in that we will have six members being appointed to committees. So I would appreciate just your flexibility in all of that because we need to be cognizant that we are leaving an open spot on one of those committees, at least one of those committees, for a member who has not yet been selected or appointed. So if you would give your flexibility, that would be great, and we will look out for that of information from you. Thank you.
Thanks, Council President. I've got a couple of events I'd like, oh, there we go. Deputy Council President?
Yeah, that's right. Yeah, just very briefly, thank you for the vote of confidence from everybody. I look forward to working with you again in the leadership. It's been a joy to work with Council President Walsh and with the rest of you, and I think we've accomplished a lot, as Victoria said, and Victoria, we are going to miss you so much. So yes, it's a bittersweet evening here. So at any rate, thanks to everybody, and we look forward to working with everybody for the rest of the year.
Thank you, Deputy Council President. I'm looking around to see if there's any other Good of the Order items. I will do a few dates. There are two events on this Saturday, January 11th. The first is something that we're offering here in council chambers. It's informational session called Serving as an Elected Official 101, and it is very 101. There is some detail, but it's really just to whet the appetite of folks who might be interested in serving on council or any other elected office. We're going to have it here from 11:00 to 12:00 in the chambers. It's going to be informal. There'll be a brief presentation, and then there'll be some time to ask questions or hear about the vacancy process that the council will now enter. And council members Walsh, De Michelle, and Hall are planning to attend, but it is a notice meeting, and if other council members want to be there. The point of having the council members attend is to allow potential candidates to ask you one-on-one questions and all of that. So we'll have a group setting, but it's also fine for questions one-on-one. The other item is the Middle Housing Walking Tour. There is a lot of discussion in our region about what is called missing middle housing because many jurisdictions do not have housing offerings that are in between single-family homes and apartment buildings. And so it's a national conversation as well. Isicuas has a variety of housing, and this tour is for council members between 1 and 245. It has various locations. It's, will start and end at the city council chambers here, 135 East Sunset Way. And it's an opportunity for our city council, as they enter into these conversations, an opportunity for our city council, as they enter into these conversations, to view the exteriors and various examples of middle housing that already exists in Isaguas. Dress for the weather, wear comfortable footwear, it's January, we don't know what we're going to get, but it's probably likely to be definitely cold. There's also a Committee of the Whole meeting on Monday, January 13th, with items that include, or may include, draft light rail station area vision and guiding principles, central Isaguas station area planning study and engagement plan, and a city facility planning task force. The next regular city council meeting is Tuesday, January 21st, and the anticipated agenda items include PFAS-agreed orders with ecology and one-time grant agreements, and an informational update on public records requests. There is no planned executive session this evening, and so with all of our business, except giving Councilmember Hunt grief for leaving, we don't have any other work tonight, and we are adjourned at 7:55.
Good night, Councilmember Mertz.